Hey.
Hi.
What's up, everybody? This is the poker coaching study session. Today we're gonna be doing GTO training. Uh, for now, we're starting EP versus CP. So do we check here or do we bet small?
I think I played check raise here a lot in game.
Probably not a lot of betting small, right? If we're gonna be betting, it's probably, uh. Betting.
No, it's a paired board. When we are betting, we're betting small.
Okay.
Well, I think the general heuristic also is a little challenging because we usually bet smaller out of position, no?
Larger.
Dude, right? Maybe, maybe I'm wrong. I don't.
Larger and less often out of position.
Okay, so we pretty much only check. Or bet small. Um. Not very good.
I like checking here. Uh, I'd probably go big here.
Eighty-three percent, yeah.
Eighty percent?
Even, even that or eight point nine sometimes.
So it's more like check or bet small. Bigger it goes really is fifty-five percent.
Uh. I don't know, man. I just rip it here sometimes in game. It's ridiculous, but it's what I would do if I took that line and got called on the turn.
Where?
Two X, but yeah.
I go fifteen. Bet fourteen point five.
Okay.
We just. We, we just over polarized the turns. The only reason I don't like this option.
Oh.
Probably you can accomplish everything with a twenty big blind bet. You can get your value paid sometimes and you get good for the equity.
I agree. I think that's gonna be a double check mark.
Like, nice is not gonna fold no matter what you put in them in, but we can put.
So, I'm, I'm between both, yeah.
I think plenty makes sense here.
Wow, he actually found a fold there.
I thought it was gonna call. Is he folding a lot of? How did he call pre flop? Do you call pre flop with that kind of shenanigans?
Sure, he's blocking.
Sure, some. It mixes. I think. I don't think it's like full frequency like slam dunk it in.
At sixty big blinds, you're not flatting ace eight suited?
Uh, verse under the gun one, verse under the gun, probably not full frequency.
I am not doing that, Pete.
Did you call? Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it's in there. It's not, but if you look like there is quite a bit of calls with some of the suited aces here.
Yeah.
I would dream about that. Makes sense to me. But.
Uh, vulnerable strength here. I think a small bet or a check.
I think this is a big bet.
It may be big. Yeah, I don't know.
Most effective way to reduce the stack to pot ratio for your top pair hand is to check raise.
Yep, I.
Peter's on it. I think.
He is on it.
A lot of check raising, yeah.
I mean, I'm not gonna lie. Like, honestly, if I find myself in this node and we went through my database, it would be like ninety-five percent checking.
Yep.
In all scenarios. I just, I honestly, I think I just play range check here so very frequently.
So really, we see all the textures here. Uh, it's mostly checking. When we bet, so a lot of small bets. Small bet happens mostly on King Eye board. Um, King Eye board, Jack Eye board. That's pretty much only what we got for going for us. And then let's look at the numbers. We check seventy percent of the time on this, uh, overall, and then it's bet small twenty percent of the time. So if you play like that, you already cover like what? Ten, ten, seventy, ninety percent of the strategy.
Right, so you could simplify your life quite a bit by checking this with a few caveats all the time.
Okay. Check or bet small EP versus CP. Oh, yeah, no, no, we changed our mind. We're not gonna bet this anymore. We're gonna check. Bet one.
Three.
All right. Now, here we go again with the hat. Let's look at the charts. Facing the bet. I wanna see the charts. So we mostly call against this bet. Not much raising.
Yeah, the lower it gets, the more raising.
Yeah, clearly. Okay, so you wanna check raise? You sure about that?
Uh, I'm very sure. I wanna go big. I wanna go like nine, six or something.
Yeah, mix between the six and the nine.
No good.
It is a small check.
There's a call. Look at this.
Yeah.
Hmm, if we check raise, I'm going big here.
Yep, thirteen.
Yeah, cuz nothing, also cuz nothing reasonable got there.
Would be nine. I'd best wanna go nine.
Double flush draw board. You just have a lot.
I'm in. It's all good, man. He's got nine, ten of hearts, so we're good.
Yeah, we're supposed to stack off for sure.
Definitely.
And like he will have, he has like queens sometimes, right?
Low frequency. Don't click that button.
Don't click fold, click call.
He's just got a lot of combo draws here.
Don't you guys think it's a little bit deep to get stacked off with up there?
Nope. Not on a double flush draw.
So like, let's, let's run through his range real quick, Louis. Like, what are you, what are we really scared of here? Okay, so he's gonna have some sets.
All right, can I? I believe that this guy here is gonna have some shenanigans, so it's fine to pay him. But if you pay population here, it's not gonna go well for you. If you call off anybody who does that here, what do you expect?
Yeah, I mean, like.
A total bump here for you to.
I would say this. Alright, so like all combos of ace, jack, I'm not calling here. Um, this one I would call unblocking both flow straws, but this is like the combo I would be calling here in game.
Yeah, people are gonna have all sorts of combo draws with the seven of hearts. Yeah, two pair. We have funds back with you against that.
I got this frickin' luck box. Oh, my God. I'm playing check here.
Uh, jack ten.
Okay. So from now on, I think, yeah.
Okay, so let's bet.
Hang on, I wanna figure out something here real quick. So we saw how it was, uh, seventy-ish percent check and then only bets small at sixty.
Sure.
What do you think at forty?
Uh, you're gonna be tilting more betting. I think you're gonna have a more prominent betting strategy. In general.
Um, looping flop, please. Call. Oh. Reports, there we go. So at forty, first off, let's look at the numbers. At forty, we still check even more.
Is that what it does?
It looked to me like it was betting more, but it checks even more.
Yeah, it's, it, it changes from sixty-nine to seventy-one. It doesn't change that much.
What changes here is the middle-ish, when the bigger sizes are used. But the shorter we, we get, the more we bet big.
Yeah, we change from having a small bet strategy, uh, to having some bigger bets. Right? Because we can drive the pot towards, um, getting, reducing this, the stack to pot ratio ourselves here.
Then if we look at all flops, it's a bit different now. King Eye board is still the best for us. That didn't change. That was the best in the other one, right?
Ace low, low, king low, low, and queen low, low, and jack low, low, always want, always wanna bet big.
And here, when, when you, when you bet, seems like it's betting a lot of big bets on these lower textures, whereas it keeps the small bets for higher textures. And then at thirty. Oh, it's not happy. Oh, is it? Did it change?
Uh, yeah, it changed it.
Oh, it did not. There we go. At thirty, let's look at the numbers table. Checking even more. Wow, okay. And then the shorter we get, the more we use the big size.
Now.
It's really going down.
It's still using small more often than large.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, for sure. But like you see here, nine, twelve percent big bets. But the shorter we get, that, that, that frequency goes up. And then.
Yes, it's the twenty percent size that really is starting to drop out.
Hmm, hmm, hmm. So for Gavin, it was simple, right? He was just checking. But.
Yes, that's what I try to do.
Though you have the wrong spot there.
Hmm.
No calling range for under the gun.
Okay, okay. All right. So we can safely assume that we're gonna check most of the.
All right, so this one, we went check, check. I think the bet is three point nine on the turn.
Flush draw straight draw board. We need some protection.
Oh, Joey nailed it. We're gonna check.
Check.
It's hard for me to play a poker hand and check twice.
Hmm.
What do you wanna do? Call this guy?
Call him on you.
We're not going broke here, but check.
Check.
Oh, oh, just lose. All right.
One street didn't cost us much.
Wow. Life is so more, so much more simple when you check on this spot, right? You can just check and then call.
Yeah, you don't have to get crazy, man.
And check and then, oh, like that, I mean.
Uh, when, when top pair, when the top card pairs, we can bet for thin value.
I don't know. Oh, my goodness. Thumbs with that, okay. I don't like this tall.
Ooh, this is, uh, this is gonna have some more betting.
What do you wanna do, Pete? You wanna bet small? Double barrel on a state?
No, this is, it's the nature of the texture. It's the king.
King Eye board, yeah, you're right. The eyes are the best ones for us, right?
Yeah, but I think, I take this hand, I'm happy checking this hand.
I think the King Eye boards are the best because he doesn't have his king, he doesn't have pocket kings.
And it's, yeah, the, the important thing is that it's king and disconnected, right? So there's a lot less straight interaction here. So, and our hand blocking the type of straight hands that are gonna continue, I think it's easier for us to bet this hand than it is for us to call. Is here. Well, hey, whoa, whoa.
Let's go back to the flop and see, see how much we're betting.
Well, the top, you're always either checking or betting small on DZ.
Okay.
Oh, the flop solution for this hand was fifty-five percent check and a combined
Yeah.
forty-five percent with the one point five and the thirty-three percent bet.
I just wanna see what combos it was, but I guess it doesn't matter that much.
So checking to fold here, I guess. But we've done it this time. I'm, I'm sorry, just a second.
Jack ten, seven with a flush draw.
All right, um, I guess we're gonna check.
What? Okay.
Right. Oh, I guess we can bet some here.
So this is a paired card that's out of his range.
And do you think that's gonna matter a lot?
Yep.
So paired. On their board. We bet the love.
It's a factor of him flopping less pairs. Then, then our overpair open range, which has all the pairs in it still.
I would probably fold here. What do you think?
Well, that, that price, like, this is, uh, this is our best king. I don't think you can fold our best king.
I'm kind of, uh, well, why don't we have ace king?
Cuz it's, it's an ace. It's ace high, not king high.
What? Yeah, okay.
Ace king, ace king is our, is an ace high. This is our best king high.
I mean, the fact that it wraps around the queen is kinda nice.
We can even raise some.
And happy days. Check.
We check. Check.
Uh, oh.
Um, not raising, right?
No, just call.
This is a chopping king. We have kings and.
Are you fine?
What's up, girls? How are you, my friend?
Having a great time. I love it.
And check call.
Check, huh?
Yeah. There we go. Happy days. So under good begun one's range is pretty tight here, so we just, we get less value bets against his very tight range as well.
But large, ain't it?
Nope.
I don't know. Check here. My life is simple now.
Yeah. It's going.
And.
That's small. So on a king board is the board we bet the most and two broadways are good. Right? So when we have a king ten flop, a king jack flop, or a king queen flop, we bet more.
Okay.
Hi.
Howdy.
That's small.
He's high, check. All right, we didn't improve. We're out of position.
Got a barrel.
Why do you wanna barrel here, Ken?
Cuz we still have a draw. We don't have to improve. We got a draw, we got over cards, we got spade blocker. Like, your barrel, you get tens to start wanting to fold. Nine, he's gonna have some nines that are gonna hit. We're just gonna let him realize equity when we check.
It's not clear to me. We didn't pick up equity, didn't we?
We have equity though. We have a gutter already.
It's not a spade. Uh, we already had the jack out.
We have ace, king, king, queen. You don't have, right? So we have ace, you don't have, we have sets of kings you don't have.
Okay, but you still have a value, a showdown here.
Yeah, and you have to, you have to look at the solver. Um, it starts building its bluffs from the bottom up. So by the time he gets up to ace queen, it's probably not gonna be in there.
His range, he's gonna have something a lot here, and even nines. We gotta keep pressuring his marginal ten X, nine X stuff. In my opinion.
Most there, check.
And we do block the nuts as well.
Okay, so you wanna go six?
What do we bet on the flop?
Yes. Now we check, uh, now we led. That's on the.
Uh, yeah, go like six point five. Maybe even nine point eight. Six point five, I'd say.
No.
Nine point eight.
A big, and then.
You gotta run top of range.
I don't know what we're doing here, but seems like we invested fifteen big blinds on the spot where we're not gonna win.
Eh, yeah, now.
That weren't trouble. If I didn't have the, if I didn't have a spade, I'd probably jam here, but with a spade, I'm like, whatever, I'm giving up.
Yeah, now after two barrels, our, our hand came showdown.
You're gonna go all in?
If I didn't have a spade, right? If I didn't have a spade, I'd be more inclined to keep bluffing.
But now, guys, name worse hands that we opened under the gun with, like ace, jack, and that's about it, right? Like ace tennis pair, ace nine's pair, all king X's a pair. Like, we have nothing worse than this. This is stone bottom range, I think.
I just hate having a spade here, honestly, to keep bluffing.
Fair enough.
I mean, it's gonna have to bluff some, I believe so, but I just give it up.
You don't have to use the all-in size too. You can also use twenty-seven here. Right? That's still eighty-five percent pot.
Peter, that's true, but I feel like on these river spots, the solver off very often goes.
Also, an argument against betting is that if he was calling withdrawals, we beat all of the draws that he called with.
Well, except this combo draws.
It's a showdown here. We just made a mess and now.
Now it's fold.
What happens if we don't have a spade? Do we bluff without a spade? Oh, he's just got it. So we were value betting to the river. Well, we were getting value until the river anyway.
This is our reverse strategy. Uh, ace queen is going with the.
Can you, Louis, can you normalize? Yeah.
Oh, the spade, uh, is fine. I was gonna say we blocked a straight, but.
Look at this.
All the under pairs.
Yeah, the other hands at one up bluff.
Savage, all in too. I don't it. I can get out of line some, but not that bad.
My King Eye boards are the one we're gonna spaz on.
Check.
High frequency check, low frequency bet. Your check.
Too, uh, this is our, yeah, oh, wow, I was gonna say, too high up in range to fold. Wow.
Wow, that's surprising.
I wanted to fold a king, jack, a few hands ago.
I think we don't have any backdoor equity at all. All we have are overs.
What do you think? Is this our best ace?
I guess it's our second best ace.
Yeah, we have ace king, right?
You call it ace king.
The other suits we probably call, huh?
Yeah, but we have all the suited aces too.
Funny how you call with ace king.
If your calls ace king.
Okay.
I think if we had something, a spade or a heart, we might still be in there.
Oh, for sure.
With ace queen.
Yeah.
Ace king, so the best, the best ace it chooses to call with there still, even without the suits.
Yeah, but we need a spade with the off, off-suited.
Yeah.
Two, seven.
And it, and it, we still have a lot of hands that wrap around the nine.
And we gotta, we gotta check a lot of pairs too, I guess. Are we checking any pairs on that flop? Top down?
I probably would have checked range.
Checking top down, probably.
Yeah.
Now, that might have been, I really think that was a check range board. We might have had like five percent bets across the board.
I don't think we checked that much.
Eighty percent easy. Like even here, I'm gonna check now.
Don't, don't check.
Why not?
He's low, low. He wants to bet a lot.
This is a check raise, I guess. We're not checking the call.
Nah.
But you see it use the big size here too a lot.
Wanna dance, Ken?
Oh, yeah, we're raising.
Yeah, uh, he, he bet big. I think I'm just calling.
I'm gonna go, I like the fifty-five percent. Ooh, smaller, very small.
Still call.
How do we not check raise? Very small or.
It was the size of his bet.
Love the duck.
Have you check raised or?
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
Oh.
I went with the check raise with the click. So now I want to bet ten.
Yeah, wants to keep him in.
Rip it.
Yeah. Right, let's replay the hand now.
He's king.
He folded. Did he fold ace king?
Normally flat, free flop. Okay, so check.
Oh, now he checks.
Three, no, three point nine.
I would, I would go in.
No, I wanna size up after the, he's pretty.
I, I've noticed that the solver doesn't solve up, size up as much when we don't bet the flop. It goes just a bit lower.
Okay, I would, I would go six. Maybe I'm making a mistake. Let's.
I was gonna say, the only thing I don't like about sixes, we block all the value. We're only getting called by draws.
Checking or, checking or betting really small about the two favorites. I wouldn't have gone that small.
Is the check raise here.
So we check again? Jesus Christ, we check flop, it checks back, we check again. Whenever I do that, it's like.
No, I don't, I don't see myself. Now we gotta raise.
Big or small? Last time it clicked.
Yeah, uh, twenty-two.
No. Call.
Just calls, keeps all his bluffs in. This polarized range. I guess he does have sets of queens here, so.
I feel like I'm in a foreign land.
Does that mean we just check here and hope he bets?
Yeah, yeah, keep all his bluffs in. Check.
I'm not, I don't know. I think we gotta check.
He polarized turn, so. Should have a lot of big bets on river, and they should be a lot of bluffs. We're really high up in our calling range. Should have a lot of big bets on river, and they should be a lot of bluffs. We're really high up in our calling range.
Um, wanna.
Oh, he's devastated. He's got a hand, he would have got all the chips in by now, and he's gonna have to check river, not get any more chips in.
I.
Gotta check, keep the fish on the line, Louis.
I'm lost. What do we do here? Really?
Boy.
No way.
Yeah, he polarized the turn. He's gonna punt.
It's not gonna do it. See?
What a net.
See, this is a disaster. I get pure disaster.
We, we won twelve big blinds with top two.
Dude, these, uh, these spots are fairy tales, man. You're not finding a guy flooding ace king there in game.
But he's taking a hundred percent there.
I just wanna bet. Yeah, check, 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 check now. Now, 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 now.
No, not that big.
Five?
He'll check.
Pete, 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 don't look at this, Pete. Close your eyes.
Don't wanna bet.
Gotta bet.
How much?
Fifty-five percent.
Point nine.
Why?
It's gonna be bigger. We're gonna polarize here, I think.
Just because we turned the back door? Don't you wanna?
Well, I mean, a lot, a decent portion of our range is gonna bet bigger here when it probes.
Well, I'm sorry, Ken, but when I turn two pair, I'm checking, so if you think I'm gonna roast chips here with this, when I'm checking with top, top, not gonna happen.
I'm gonna five point, I'm gonna five point nine.
Oh my goodness, what are we?
It was even bigger, eight point nine.
Yeah, that's what I said. You get better aces to fold, you have a high equity draw. Your aces and kings are vulnerable to being drawn out on, wanna get equity from a queen?
Alright. After it goes check, check, we actually bet big enough. Okay.
Overpot, which I don't find, to be honest.
Um.
See, I do, like, that's my standard for, you know, against a miss C bet or a miss float bet, like, that's a capping action. What's confusing is that we didn't have in the last hand, the ace queen.
Okay.
He called it overbet on the turn?
Yeah.
Begging me out.
Want to give up? We have ace high?
Yeah, sucks. Diamonds are bad, but also like, he has some like combo draws. Head of some of which we beat, we beat like king jack, king nine, ugh.
We beat all the combo draws, but we can't call if he bets.
Yeah. Though he has like ace jack here, I think it's on frequency, some mid pairs, like pocket, pocket eights, pocket nine kinda stuff.
Get me out. Oh, these guys.
Me and, oh.
The cookie. Like, we get a lot of better hands for if we fire.
For sure, you get to get pocket nines to fold.
Does he call it? Does he call like?
He, he might not even.
With no diamonds?
He might not even call all of his tens.
I was asking if he called king ten with no diamonds, king ten with diamonds.
I was thinking of diamonds.
I guess makes sense. But what'd he do with king ten without a diamonds?
Uh, let's see.
See what the clubs do.
He's not calling very much, but.
No.
Even a ten. So he's more. Doing his stands.
Sixty-seven percent of the range folds when we ship it. Pocket jacks are gone.
Are they?
Yeah.
Oh, good luck, Ken Fiona.
Yes, right, good luck.
You're gonna pull it off on ACR? Be my guest. Um, okay, so we check.
Check breaks.
I call this one.
Call.
One of my worst, one of my worst tens. Ten H is my worst, right? Ten eight, ten nine, this is in the middle.
Okay, okay.
We, we saw before that he does a lot of calling even with top pair.
He's ten, king ten, yeah, yeah.
Interestingly, ten nine and ten eight do raise.
Cause they got straight outs.
Oh.
Yeah, but look at the ace tens that do, look at the ace tens that two raise, are they the backdoor flush draws too?
Uh.
No, ace ten of clubs is still doing it.
Ten nine, ten eight probably has backdoor spades and hearts.
Yeah, it's doing it more with it.
What about the ten nine, ten eight? So they backdoor flushes as well?
Yeah.
Well, it doesn't care, clubs are in there.
It is doing it slightly more without, without the clubs, but I wouldn't say enough to really make a difference in how you're.
Anyone chick raising is five or a six there?
Yeah, let's go.
No.
The good old king six full frequency.
Oh, I don't find that one.
Full frequency.
With the backdoor, with the backdoor flush draws, not full frequency. It's folding the clubs.
But he. Did he, did he ten?
Yeah.
Good though, you got straight draw, overcard, flush backdoor flush draw.
Okay. That's all. The check calling simulator. Make two pair.
Uh, does the target check, check?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a one, it's a one liner though.
Oh my god.
Why would you say check again?
Cause it's on four liner.
How many nines does he have, Ken?
I don't know. He's got saw, he's got the, uh, some suited nines, right? No, all suited nines.
No, he shouldn't have them under the gun one.
Ace nine suited?
Ace nine.
Jack nine? And nine?
Dude, he does not have jack nine. Am I crazy?
I don't think he does either, but he's got ace nine and king nine, right?
And also, also in the solver, hands like.
Probably, he probably has ace nine. He does have ace nine, he's got pocket nines, I think.
In the solver, jack nine and queen nine are three bets at some portion too.
I was gonna say, king nine is probably three betting, so I'm unfolding, but ace nine for sure.
Lines deep, he's gonna have those.
Dude, you guys are crazy. Let me take a look.
Oh, make a look. Yeah, Pete can pull it up.
Yes, pop the pre, pre flop ranges.
Uh, ten nines in there, I think, too. It's get probably like queen nine.
Maybe I'm just a nit.
Queen nine's out, jack nine's out, ki- king nine, three bets. Ten nine's not in full frequency.
Although, though.
Okay, so we bet fold then, or we bet?
I mean. I guess we got, I don't know, dude. That fold, I guess. He jams. Come call fives.
Well, I think it depends on the size of his raise.
Well, that's why I said if he jams.
Just fall with a nine. Wow. Aces, kings, queens, okay, okay.
Look at him call.
What a psycho.
Find a fifth pair call on a one line, on a, on a four liner board.
Yeah.
Definitely gonna bet this some.
Nope.
I thi- think this is, this is perfect check raise, I think, too.
What if?
Half pot.
So when it goes check, check, we're not supposed to lose our mind here, right?
Half pot.
Half pot.
You guys wanna bet?
Give value from single stage, so.
We're supposed to check.
I guess that's bigger, actually.
We need to stay calm.
Yeah, relax, he's gonna bet now his ace.
Now bet, please.
Need to check.
Uh, you gotta bet, you gotta go for value, dude. You got trips here.
Fine, it's a lot more simple.
He checks down three times, but like, what are we wrapping? So we probably can't go too big.
You really wanna, uh, check? You really wanna win three big blinds with it, pop set? Just to check, man.
Yeah, because I understood now that when it's EP against DP, we don't drive the action.
Well, maybe it's the same, but it goes over about pot, third of the time.
Would we basically?
Playing, we're playing GTO, not KTO, though.
Yeah, so we're just gonna capture what he puts in. Pretty much what we can do. That's what I understand from him. Let's do it again. Check, feels bad. Check, feels bad. Check, feels bad.
Well, dude, I think it's just the spot, man, like, like, okay, so first off, you don't play the spot very often. And then when you play this spot, there's like no opportunity to get a mountain EV out of it.
Yeah.
Like.
It's workless, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, betting and checking EVs were the same, so you can bet sometimes, right?
Okay, finally, finally.
Now I think all in's too big.
Yeah, we don't have the dots, you can go all in.
Seventeen.
Seventeen is big, no?
Yeah, we got a high, high up in our value range hat.
Okay, seventeen, you guys are ready.
How about call?
It's just.
Oh, no. No. Oh my god. Okay, 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 what do you, you guys are.
Now are you happy that you've lost it all?
Um, what do you mean, fold? Are you out of?
If I, if I was gonna call, I would have bet more.
You're folding, you're screwed.
Yeah.
I'm never folding here.
If you're gonna be able to call, you could have bet for more value.
Jesus Christ, what is he gonna show? Oh.
Of course he's nuts. Look at him check the nuts on the turn like a pro.
He, he checked a premium hand on the flop, the nuts on the turn.
The checking simulator.
Yeah, alright, so Louis, yeah, we gotta get out of this mode node. Basically, it's check call with value and.
Some blood.
Fold, fold the junk.
Alright.